Success team. I know I've spoken to a few of you via either via email or phone. And I'm joined today by one of our data scientists, Daniel Argyle. Yeah, Daniel, you should be there on the line, right?
I am here, yes.
Awesome, great. Thanks for joining us. A couple of updates on the company. Next month, early next month, you'll actually find a few fiscal noters over in the area. And we're holding an event actually with NEA kind of entitled "The State of Regulations in Silicon Valley." So, we actually just released a research paper on regulations in the technology industry. And looking at trends, looking at some of the data actually coming out of the platform. It's a really great, well, a really, a really great read. And we're actually hosting a few panels with some kind of thinkers and shakers and movers in the technology public policy arena. So, if you're in the Bay Area, or if you have a friend who you think might enjoy it, you can contact support. Happy to send you guys the invite so you can get registered for that. Secondly, on our Help Center, we actually now have a community forum. So, this is a space where we encourage people to kind of take any of their product feedback, any of the suggestions that you might have, because we actually get such awesome feedback from our users about, you know, either data sets that they'd like to see in the platform, features that they'd like to see in the platform. This is a space where you can actually post them and read other people's feedback. So, maybe someone else had the same idea as you, you can actually vote on it, you know, upvote it to say, "Oh yeah, I'm behind that." It's also anonymized, so I think you, you can log in, but it doesn't have to be your name, so you don't have to worry about that. And what's really great is not only do I read them and the client success team and the support team, but our product managers actually also read through the community forum. So, they're going to be able to comment, you know, respond, maybe answer some questions or kind of a thought process while we design the product. And it's a great way to kind of get involved and engaged actually with other parts of the company. So, for that, it's actually at support.fiscalnote.com. And lastly, actually really exciting news, we were informed that our CEO, Tim Wong, named two Inc.'s 30 under 30, and they actually did a profile on Fiscal Note and put up an entire, one of our videos. So, it was just really exciting to be kind of, to be part of Tim's story and for our company to really kind of be recognized outside of DC and outside of just the technology. That link that I'll send out, you can actually click into the PDF and get to that article. Okay, so, kind of the layout of today, it's going to, I'm going to go over kind of the basics of how we pull data into the system, pull data from the internet, from open source data into Fiscal Note. And then I'm going to pass it off to Daniel to really take us through what some of our analytics look like on that data. So, when we take that data and kind of understand it and then are able to run kind of predictions and, and other kinds of analytics, I'll pass that over to him. So, for me, the easy way to understand, sorry about that, the easy way to understand data is that the really structure of data. We have what's called structured data, and we thought of like this kind of really neat analogy in order to understand it. So, structured data is like a resume. So, the information there, the data we're talking about is literally your professional information, your professional educational information. A resume is a formalized way of representing that data, right? You know, there are places for each piece of information, and across resume, there is kind of a standard way to do it, right? They, they might look different, but the idea is that you structure the information in a certain way so that you can compare it across groups. So, it's clean, it's formatted, and it's standard. Unstructured data is like taking all of that professional and educational information and writing a cover letter based on it. So, it's a little more messy, it's a little more, you know, less formatted and less organized. It's still the same information, but it's not easily standardized. And so, kind of taking that comparison, we look at, at Fiscal Note, we look at both structured data and unstructured data. Structured data being things like votes that come in very clean, right? You know, here is the bill and then the vote number. Or sponsors and cosponsors, lists of names that are organized in a certain way. There are some state legislature websites, New York being one of the ones that stands out actually, that is actually quite structured, very well organized and, and have formalized the information so that all bill texts are represented the same way. And then all lists of sponsors are represented. The structured side, you've got bill texts, right? States not only publish this data differently, so some states publish it as PDF, whereas some publish as plain text on the website, but they're also organized differently. So, titles look different, and, and so that's unstructured in that when we pull that information, we have to go through and figure out a way to make it look all the same across all 50 states and federal. Things like timelines, and then, you know, most state legislature websites are not actually structured or fully structured, right? They have to be to some degree. And so, what Fiscal Note is doing, what Fiscal Note's data science team is doing, is taking all of this information, both structured and unstructured, and structuring it, right? So, putting it all together and formalizing it so that we can understand each piece of information in the same way, and therefore represent it on the platform, on the internet in the same way. So, trying to take this information and make it actionable. Take it from just being, you know, across different websites, across different states, and actually put it into a place where you can access insight from all of that information. What you'll see there in that equation is that we take that data and then apply NLP, which is natural language processing, and machine learning. The natural language processing being the same technology that your iPhone Siri uses to kind of understand the technology language that you're using when you speak into your phone. And machine learning being the technology that learns, that we teach the machines to actually understand the patterns in language and then able to either replicate it or recognize it in the future. And then we get kind of the Fiscal Note platform from all of this data being collected, organized, and then applying those advanced technologies to the data. Here is just kind of, kind of an example, a visual of what we mean by the fact that not all the data looks the same. So, you know, you'll see here there are lists of sponsors or lists of legislators, and that might look different from state to state. And then each link will take you to a new piece of information that is obviously not the same as the state represented it. So, this just being a visual explanation of what I just spoke about, that the data really does all look different, and we know that you know this from your experience, but just kind of explaining that that's one of the powers of Fiscal Note, is that we've built a system that is able to pull it and then actually validate that data across, across all of the information. So, that's the overview on the data itself. I'm going to pass this over to Daniel to, to take a look at the analytics.
All right, so, I'm just going to talk a little bit first about effectiveness scores. So, and then later, we're going to talk a little bit about the similarity scores that we put on legislator pages. So, I switched slides, sorry. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, use the air, it should.
Yeah, all right. So, what we want to measure fundamentally is how good a legislator is at sort of getting the bill that they want through this, through the process. And so, the easiest way of doing that is looking at their, their record of bills they sponsored, right? So, basically what we're trying to do is look at how many bills that they were able to get through the process relative to how many bills there were sort of overall, right? And so, one other additional thing that we have to do in order to do this is break down bills by categories, because often legislator might be really good at getting a bill passed in one area and not as good as getting a bill passed in another area. And so, there's a couple of things, you know, so we can look first off at the record of bills that they sponsored in the session. We also consider bills that they co-sponsor. It's weighted less, obviously, because cosponsoring is not nearly as important as being the sponsor of the bill that gets enacted, but we do consider that as well. And we can also look at effectiveness at sort of different stages. So, you might imagine that a legislator might be able to get a bill out of committee, but not through the whole floor process signed by the governor, all the subsequent steps to go through that. And so, we could try and account that, that as well. And one thing that is sort of really important in this is it's a measurement that maybe best used comparing legislators to each other, right? So, if we compare one legislator in one, in one area to the same legislator in that same area, we can tell which one's sort of been more successful at getting bills enacted. And that's sort of the best way to use these. Taking a step back for a second, though, what we have to do first before we can sort of measure effectiveness in areas is figure out what the bill is actually about. Amanda talked about the bill text is one of the things that's usually most unstructured that we have to deal with. So, we have to be able to process the bill and then use different techniques to sort of figure what the bill is about. So, over here, you have an example on the left side, right, where you can think of this system where we're trying to find out what this bill is about. This bill is talking about employers and employees, so that makes it sound like a labor employment sort of bill. But then there's also this section that's highlighted in red, it's talking about sick leave and health leave, so it's also a health bill, right? And so, this can be, you know, this bill's, can fit into both categories. So, do we tag it as both? Is it about the other? On top of that, there's this blue section that talks about the legal ramifications of the bill, and so it's maybe a legal tag. So, without getting into the nitty gritty details of all of this, we are basically creating a giant system that will process texts of all these bills and apply these tags to them in, in various categories. So, that's what, the big words there on the right mean, right? Hierarchical multi-label classification is basically, we're looking to see what bill, what label we should put on a bill. And then, once we've done that, we can look at all the bills in that area and see how effective a legislator is. So, one very simple way that you'll see this in the platform is that we'll have top categories, and this just looks at the number of bills that a legislator has enacted. It's true that frequently, common categories during administration, because those are a lot of bills. Most of the bills in the, in the systems fall under this, some sort of administrative component, but most of the things that follow are relevant. So, this specific legislator is best in the areas of sort of families and children, labor and employment, education, social issues. They're not as strong in other things, so the financial budget bills, those kind of things are not sort of their forte, they're focusing more on social issues. On top of that, you know, the number of bills they introduce is not the same thing as being really good in one area or another. As I already mentioned, you know, government administration is an area where there's a lot of things introduced. So, people may get a lot of things passed in that area even if they're not really that effective, right? They can still pass a few bills, but in the flood of everything else, that's only a small portion. So, effectiveness scores are one way, one wolf thing that the effectiveness scores do is it calibrates sort of relative to how many bills are in that category. Often, the people have a different effectiveness sort of ranking compared to their introduction. So, this person's relatively better at getting things done in this area even though they haven't introduced as much as other people, right? So, you can sort of tell the quality of a bill sponsor as opposed to the quantity. So, now, we're going to transition a little bit from that and talk about similarity. And this is something that was one of the things that really attracted me to coming to Fiscal Note in the first place and working in this, because this is an area that I'd worked on in my PhD dissertation. And the idea is that a legislator can be thought of as a social network of legislatures, right? So, we have this set of people, and they interact with each other in many different ways. Two of the ways that are most easily observed in data are the way they vote and the way they sponsor, cosponsor bills with each other. And so, you know, we have this really dense network of connections of legislators who work together very frequently, right? So, you can imagine that there's legislators who work together a lot, and they'll sort of clump in, in an area, right, because they're collaborating a lot. And then, there's legislators that clump in, in different, in a different area, sort of in this network. This is really common, this kind of structure, because of the two-party system, that you have two different groups of people. And so, this sort of idea of a legislature, the social network, is underlying two of these analytics that we're going to talk about. The first is a voting network. And so, we can think about voting similarity, we call it, on the app. So, you know, we go through and we find and scrape all the vote history for all these legislators. And what we want to do is one, how similarly these two legislators believe. And one way to see that is which bills they both agreed on. So, we want to go through, we're going to find all of the bills that both legislators voted on, and then we're simply going to tally up how many times both people voted yes, and how many times they both voted no, and then divide by the total number of times they both voted, right? And so, in a legislator like the one we showed you previously, there's two very clear clusters, right? So, you have the Republican and the Democratic cluster where they vote similarly. And I should say that this graph is for a specific legislator. This legislator votes very similarly to Republicans and not very similarly to Democrats, right? And so, that's not, you know, too surprising, that's the way we expect legislators to behave. But one of the things that's really interesting is even within that group, there's people that don't vote as similarly to a given legislator, or there's Democrats who vote more similarly to them than others. And those are interesting people to maybe find out about who someone is actually collaborating with, who they, who they like to work with, those kind of things, and sort of who they share similar ideas to. So, if you need to find a bipartisan person that might share their, share their background, that's one way to do that. Here's another way of looking at the same data, and it's, what this has done is it's basically taken, for every single legislator in that network that you just saw, it's gone through and looked at the similarity score for every legislator. So, each little square is the similarity of the row legislator with the column legislator. And again, you can sort of see, these really dark blues mean that these people are very similar, and the very light blues mean that they're not, right? And so, this is what the whole network looks like. And, you know, this is one way we can see sort of which legislators are similar. Another way to sort of think about a network is cosponsorship. And what we, what we like to do here is we'd like to see how often they cosponsor a bill together. So, if legislator A sponsors the bill, how likely is legislator B to cosponsor it? And, you know, this one poses a challenge in one way, because voting happens a lot. There are lots of votes, and there are lots of votes that both people participate in. A cosponsorship between two legislators is relatively rare, at least compared to this extent they have voting. So, one way to account for that is we also can look at sort of the set of people that they collaborate with a lot. So, if I am cosponsoring with this set of legislators very frequently, and so would someone else, we also consider that as part of their cosponsorship similarity. So, it includes both the personal relationship between legislator A and B, but also the set of people that they work with very frequently. So, in the same graph we have before, on the X-axis where we have voting similarity, so the percent of time that they voted together, you have cosponsorship similarity on the Y-axis. And what that shows you is sort of who works together more often. It's not at all uncommon that these groups will overlap more. So, you'll notice here, there are Republicans that this legislator works with less often than there are Democrats. This is one simple reason this happens a lot, is because many legislators have sort of, they specialize in, and it's not too surprising that they'll collaborate more and co-sponsor more with the people in the other party than people in their own party who are working in completely different areas. And so, we, we put both these on this graph, so you can sort of identify interesting people. So, this person right here, this is a Republican who does not vote with this legislator and does not work in the same area as this legislator. Whereas, if you might find someone over here who votes as much as a Democrat's going to vote with a Republican, votes with them most, a lot of the time, and then also works with this person more often, or works with people who work with this person more often. So, cosponsorship similarity is sort of going to tell you who, what areas they work with and what, what they're working on. So, you can combine these things and actually get our forecast scores. So, there's a lot of things that go into our predictions and our predictive analytics, but two of the main things that work really well are these network-driven things, right? So, we take the, the network of legislators, and we take the bill text and other attributes of the bill and the bill sponsors, and that's where we actually get our floor scores, the whipboard. All of those things are sort of built on that information and data. So, one thing that's really interesting about the whipboard, that's one of the things that I was put in charge of when I first arrived at Fiscal Note, was to sort of predict how legislators are going to vote. The best predictors of how a legislator is going to vote is usually their voting similarity with the sponsor of the bill. So, if you are someone who agrees frequently with that sponsor, you're mostly, you're more likely to vote, which makes pretty good intuitive sense, and it's the single strongest predictor usually on, on our models. Then, another thing that's really interesting is the network relationships, cosponsor networks also become really important in this, in terms of this. So, what ends up being really interesting is it's not only the attributes of the legislator that are predictive, but also the attributes of the legislator's cosponsors also are predictive as to how they will vote. And one reason this might be true is you can see a setting where legislators, you know, they have their own set of beliefs, but the set of people that they frequently work with will tell you a little bit more about their belief just sort of observing the legislator's behavior. So, you know, it goes back to the idea that, you know, they might be working frequently with these people, and there, it's more informative than looking at sort of only their history or the history of the whole party. The history of who they work with is also really important as to predicting these outcomes. Whoops.
Interesting, yep. Oh, did you want to say on that page?
No, so, and that's, this is just the sum up page, right? So, you know, all, we take all this unstructured and structured data from various legislative websites, and we sort of build these network metrics of other analytics that we put on the page, and then we use those to build the forecasts. And so, it's, it's really incredible a way to take sort of this data that looks so different when you actually look at, on the, look at on the site and be able to integrate it into something that's actually informative and useful and predictive of legislative behavior.
Right, and just kind of to touch on what you were, what you were talking about, especially with the cosponsorship information, I think the, the platform kind of presents it as a kind of a one-use, right? Like, you're looking for someone to help cosponsor a bill that you need or that you, you know, that you need to get passed. But I think what, what you're saying is that it's actually kind of a nice research tool, right? To understand how, you know, a particular legislator that you're either working with or thinking about working with might, might, in a certain policy area or in a certain category, it's actually helpful to then go to the similar legislators and look at who is most likely to vote with them in that area to do research, like even not, even just to understand kind of their position. So, I think, I just think that that's a really interesting application as opposed to just the pure looking for a different cosponsor and finding it, but as actually a source of research.
Right, it gives you additional information as you do that process. You'll, you'll know more about maybe who this legislator actually brings in, right, as a, sort of the groups that you're trying to reach out to.
Right.
All those kind of things can be seen through the analytics.
Right, right, right. Well, so, Daniel, we actually got a couple of questions that I was going to go into address, and feel free to jump in. I think I'll read through, and then we can, we can kind of talk about them. So, one of the questions, so here, here, it's kind of got some context. So, a number of states will combine multiple bills into an omnibus bill. So, a member's policy may be enacted one year, but not in a bill that they specifically sponsored. Do our calculations account for this in any way? I think we actually just talked about this, Daniel, so I don't know if you want to, want to talk a little bit about how, how we treat and how we're thinking about treating omnibus bills?
We, we did just talk about this. So, there's a, there's a couple of things going on. So, right now, we're only able to, to account for the direct sponsor of, of the omnibus bill. And so, if that person is the added sponsor, that's not going to be included in the current measure. However, we're looking to move forwards to, move forward a text-based system, right? So, we know that this legislator was responsible for introducing this specific text, and we can sort of track that through the system, that even if it appears in omnibus bill, we'll be able to map it back to the legislator who introduced it. The key problem and the key difficulty with this is the unstructured nature of a lot of the bill texts that we get from various state websites, that it's just not very good. And when the text that comes through garbled, matching the text like that becomes very difficult. So, one of the things that we're constantly improving and constantly better at is processing that text so it matches up better, and then as a research data science team, we're constantly trying to improve the measurements that we have. So, that's something we're aware of and working on, and I think we're making some, some pretty good progress on that.
Thanks, yeah, I know, it's funny, it's actually a question that we've gotten a number of times recently, so you're definitely not alone in asking. I think Daniel hit, hit the nail on the head when he said that really the issue is, and as you very well know, working with omnibus bills, that they are just so, there's so much in them, and that actually connecting the text to the legislator will prove to be difficult. But it's exciting to know that we're working on it. Another question we got was about, oh, so, so Daniel, this is about the, the categories, right? So, the categories that we use to slot bills into. So, I don't know if we necessarily have a list of the different topics that go into each category, but I, I don't know that there's a list that exists. It's a great idea that I can definitely address for the, for the user who asked this question. But, I'm curious if you have any, if you have any kind of comments on how we actually created the categories, or maybe kind of even just kind of about the text, right? Like, how did we figure out that, that there were certain topics that fit into each category?
So, excuse me, what we were looking for when we were creating the bill categorization is something that captures sort of all the aspects of, of legislation that can exist in policy areas. And so, we built our own system from the ground up, and we were sort of inspired by a few other systems that, that exist, you know? So, there's like industry, standard industry codes that the Census puts together. So, you'll sort of see similar areas that pop up here, but, you know, industry codes are all of the social policy. It's not going to capture whether there's not a, a bill about sort of civil rights, for example, it's not going to pop up in industry classification. Took those kind of measures and with some other taxonomies of sort of basically social policy and those kind of things, we, we built the system up as sort of our own proprietary system out of, out of that sort of inspiration.
Right, right. And then using the, the NLP that we had to understand the text of the bill, we're able to then kind of create, right, like you said, our own kind of proprietary group of categories. But I actually think that that's a really great idea, and I, we'll be checking in with our research team to see if there's any kind of overall list that maybe I can post on the Help Center so that you can better understand and so that all users can better understand when we say health, or when we say infrastructure, when we say immigration, what exactly goes into that. I think one way to think of it is that those subcategories within the platform, so when you click a category, there are usually subcategories underneath that, that's one way to look at it. But I definitely understand if you'd be interested in something more kind of granular, I think that's a great idea, and we'll definitely look into it. The last question was actually, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, there's, there's, I think, 36 high-level categories, right?
Okay.
So, the levels that you see traditionally displayed, but then there's hundreds of sort of subcategories below that. So, I don't know if it's, but that's.
Right, this, you know, creating some kind of, you know, jQuery where you could search and then get all, get the list. And I also think that what, what doesn't necessarily help is that we, in the business of creating categories where our, our users see kind of a need, so as we build out who, you know, who we work with and who has this policy expertise, we can then hear from you, you know, here's this set of bills for an entire policy area that we're not actually labeling or categorizing. So, we also add, add categories that way. But yeah, I, I, just what you said, there are so many, we'll have to figure out the best way to represent that. And so, the last question actually had to do with the effectiveness graph, so this graph that you see here. We've, we've definitely heard kind of difficulty with just, not only just reading the labels, but just in understanding what that graph means. And I think it's good for, you know, someone like Daniel on the research team, and I also will take that, that information back to the product team to think about how we design it so that it's better understood. I, I know that they are thinking about it, we actually are going through an entire page redesign kind of period right now, so think, really thinking critically about how to best represent the data and best represent the NLP comment to the, to the appropriate teams, because definitely want you to be able to understand the data if it's, if it's going to be there. That was the, those were all the questions that came through. If anyone has any other questions, I'll, I'll hang out here, I'll keep it up for like another couple of seconds. But also, if you haven't been, you should, for a number of, to our Help Center at support.fiscalnote.com. We're actually kind of revamping the information that we provide there, so there'll be a lot more information in the coming months, especially over the summer, on these analytics, actually working, we work with the data scientists to kind of create this content so that you can better understand how to use the platform and that, like, in the platform. And so, I'd go there to look for more answers to your questions after this call, as well as for the community forum, since that came out of this, that'd be another great place to put them, that have to do with the product design, because we can then get our product managers on those questions as well. So, yeah, I'll leave that up and leave it up for just a couple more seconds, but if no one has any other questions, I'm happy to, I'm happy to give you guys back another half hour. Yeah, I'm glad that these usually don't take the full hour, I think that might be a bit much. So, this was a really great conversation, I hope that it was helpful as you think about the platform. And Daniel, thanks. I'm glad that these usually don't take the full hour, I think that might be a bit much. So this was a really great conversation, I hope that it was helpful as you think about the platform, and Daniel, thanks so much for joining us.
Oh, no problem, it's happy to do it.
Awesome. Okay, well, I think I'm going to let everyone go. Thank you so much, and look forward to meeting you all soon.